I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business tonight is recognitions. I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Cates.
Welcome and thank you for joining us this evening. We have some outstanding students to recognize and this time I'd like to ask our Director of Activities and Athletics, Eric Wankowski, to the podium.
Board of Education and Dr. Cates, thank you for taking some time out of your busy night to honor some really talented students. Students, as your sponsor introduces you, please walk forward to the podium, receive your award and stand next to it. Additionally, parents as you're in, family members as you're directed, could please stand and be introduced by the coach or sponsor. Helping me present these students tonight are Palatine High School Principal Tony Medina and Assistant Principal Michael Arthur, Fremd High School Principal Kurt Teniper and Assistant Principal, I'm sorry, and Athletic Director David Dick, Conan High School Principal Julie Novak and Assistant Principal Mark Langer and Hoffman Estates High School Principal Josh Shoemaker. Okay, we'll get started with math team. We'll start with Palatine, Craig Barnes. Craig Barnes has been in the district for 25 years, 11 at Hoffman Estates and the last 14 at Palatine. Craig serves as the math department chair at Palatine High School and has been the Palatine High School math head coach for the last 12 years. Craig?
Thank you and good evening. Just to give you a little bit of a background in terms of the contest, the Illinois Council of Teachers of Mathematics sponsors a competition across the state for all schools in Illinois. And there are 11 different contests that qualify for individual math contests and team contests. And you're gonna hear a lot about those different contests tonight because District 211 is well represented tonight. And what they do is they add up all the points in those contests and then they give you a grand total score and then they rank all teams across the state. So again, we were well represented. Tonight I'm here to recognize Ryan Sau and John Wang for earning fourth place in the state in the junior senior two-person math contest. Ryan is here with his parents, Chris and John Sau, and John is here with his parents, Hongwei and Kevin Wang. So if they could stand and be recognized, please. The junior senior two-person contest is extremely challenging. Approximately 30 pairs of students from the top schools in the state compete in three different rooms vying for a chance to get to the finals. In order to make the finals, a pair of students must win their room or be the one wild card team chosen to participate in the finals. The teams of students are shown a problem on a screen and if a team solves the problem in the first minute, they get six points, in the second minute, four points, in the third minute, three points. There's a two-point bonus for the team that solves the problem first. This continues for 10 questions. Their problems typically can be divided into two parts and the answers can be combined for a single answer. I have to tell a little story here. I never told Ryan and John what room they were going to be with in the contest. I did that on purpose because I knew they were up to the challenge no matter what room they were in. Just when they got to the room on that day, I got a text from them with a picture of the teams that were in that room. They're like, "This is our room?" And included teams like Stevenson, Walter Payton, New Trier, Naperville Central, IMSA, Glenbrook South, all contenders for the state trophy every year. I responded with, "All you need to do is get points." They earned second place in the room and the wild card spot in the finals by answering the last six of the 10 questions correctly in the first minute and earning first place bonus on five of those questions. Simply amazing. Now they got to compete against the other three-room winners and an auditorium filled with students with coaches where a similar process is repeated. After five questions, the final places are determined. Very, very, very intimidating and difficult. They represented PHA's probably missing out on third by a second. They are first two-person team in history of Palatine to make the state finals and are part of the entire PHA's team that took home its first-ever team state trophy, earning 10th. Ryan is a junior who will be leading the team next year to its second state trophy and John will be attending Harvard University while studying neuroscience. Congratulations Pirates.
All right, next we'll move on to Fremd High School. Chris Grittoni. Chris Grittoni is a nationally board-certified math and computer science teacher at Fremd High School and he's been coaching on the math team since 2007 and has served as the head coach since 2012. And Chris is also a proud graduate of District 211. Chris?
It is my pleasure to introduce the members of the Fremd High School math team who earned medals at the ICTM mathematics contest. The eight students we are recognizing tonight earned fourth place in the state with their superb performance on the freshman sophomore eight-person contest. This contest consists of 20 questions in 20 minutes, there are no calculators allowed, and each team can only submit one answer sheet. Because of these challenges, a successful eight-person team requires a superb level of teamwork, communication skills, and mathematical ability. Our eight students practiced tirelessly for five months to achieve this level of success. Of course, they didn't get here completely on their own. I'm very grateful for how supportive Fremd's administration and District 211 leadership is of our program and I am grateful for the strong support our students get from their parents. I'd like to ask the parents of our freshman sophomore eight-person team to please stand and be recognized. Thank you. Finally, I'd like to call each team member forward to receive a District 211 medallion recognizing their accomplishment. When you hear your name, please come forward. Freshman, Prithi Jagadeesan. Freshman, Ziwei Zheng. Freshman, Aaron Kirsten. Freshman, Maggie Wu. Sophomore, Stella Chung. Sophomore, Jay Segal. Sophomore, Shoya Yamazaki. And last but not least, sophomore, Angelina Zhang. Congratulations to all of you and on behalf of the entire math team, I'd like to thank you for your tireless hard work and dedication. You have truly upheld Fremd's math team's tradition of excellence.
We'll move on to the Conan High School math team. Rich Cortez has been a math teacher and consumer science teacher at Conan High School since 1994 and he has been the math team coach for 16 years. Rich?
First of all, I'd like to recognize the parents of the Conan's math team. These students have been practicing countless hours since August. They, August through May, they practice at least two to three times a week. They get together after school, they get together at the Schaumburg Library, and the parents make this happen by allowing them to do this and countless hours spent driving back and forth. So could the parents of the Conan math team please stand up to be recognized? Conan math team has had an amazing season this year with a third-place division finish, second-place regional finish, and a 12th-place state finish culminating in two groups that are going to get awards tonight. The first group is the eight-person math team and as you already heard, it's the contest where it's 20 questions with eight people and 20 minutes and it's an extremely stressful situation to be a part of. And this team got second, which is the top place we've ever gotten in the state for this contest at Conan High School. So I'm going to call them forward one at a time to be recognized and as you do, please step this way. We put a freshman, this is a junior senior team, we put a freshman on it this year. So this is an outstanding achievement for this freshman. So Divid Garg, please come over. Junior Henry Wang. Junior Liz Zhang. Senior Nikita Basu. Senior Jared Gomes. Senior Michelle Zhang. And the team was anchored by the last two, Junior Andrew Myliss. And a little something else about Andrew, he is also the first United States Math Olympiad winner at Conan High School in the history of our Conan ever. So that was an amazing achievement, top 150 students in the country. And then... And finally, Senior Rajah Matul. And I'm going to have Rajah stand over here, I have more to say about him. He was also Conan's first-ever state winner at the math team state meet and he won this in orals. Orals is an amazing event. It is the most stressful event you can ever imagine. They learn topics that aren't even taught in high school. They are all college topics and a lot of them are topics that are graduate-level college topics. The contest consists of two parts. The first part is 10 minutes and he is given four questions to do in 10 minutes by himself in a room and then he has to go and present in front of a panel such as yourself. And he has seven minutes to present those four questions and he is graded on the accuracy and also his presentation style itself. And he got first place and it was absolutely amazing and it's the best finish we've ever had and one of the top math students we've ever had at Conan High School. Congratulations.
All right, rounding out the math competition is Hoffman Estates High School. Katrina O'Donnell has been teaching in math at Hoffman Estates since 2010. Since 2014, she has been coaching the math team specializing in freshman and sophomore levels. Katrina?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for honoring these two wonderful ladies tonight. The first one is Pooja Khatri. And the second is Nico Otsuka. I would also like to thank their parents that are here tonight if they could please stand. So a little about these ladies. First, Nico, she's our freshman student and she was an integral part of our team this year. She attended a majority of our contests. She was very successful at our regional and helped our team qualify for state. We look forward to having her for three more years. Pooja is a sophomore, so they were on the freshman sophomore team together. Pooja's the sophomore that was on that team. She's actually been down to state now twice, so both times freshman sophomore years she's qualified for state and both times she has earned a medal, meaning she's gotten 10th place or better. So also look forward to more from her in the coming years. A little bit more about Pooja though, since she's sophomore, she's done a little bit more, but this year, Pooja was actually our top scorer for the geometry level. And what's maybe even a little more impressive is she was also on the junior algebra II level, meaning she competed on both the sophomore and the junior level at all of our meets and she actually was the second highest scorer at the junior level even though she was only a sophomore. So we really appreciated all her help this year. One other thing that she did that was very impressive, she scored a perfect paper at our conference meet and I looked back, that has not been done since 2013. So she really stepped it up and really helped our team out with a lot of points this year. The reason we're here though, yeah, we should clap. The reason we're here obviously is their state, their state performance. So they were on the freshman sophomore two-person team and as you've heard other coaches say, it's a very intense contest, it's timed, the more quickly they answer, the more points they get. And they actually made it into the playoffs, which we got to watch in the Lincoln Hall auditorium with hundreds of people watching on and it's a very stressful contest for them and it was super stressful watching too and I can only imagine how they were feeling. But they pulled out a second-place win, so they are in second place in state for the freshman sophomore two-person team. Nice job. So congratulations, congratulations ladies and I look forward to your bright futures. Thank you.
All right, now we'll move on to the IHSA Journalism Contest. Grant Dawson from Fremd High School has been teaching English there for the last eight years. For seven of those years, he's been the newspaper advisor and Grant is also a proud graduate of District 211.
Thank you for allowing us to recognize all of these students for their achievements tonight. I was asked to tell you about the IHSA Journalism Competition, so I'll just answer the question in everybody's mind, yes, there is a journalism competition at the IHSA level. And I always love telling that to students and other folks because they always say, "Well, what do you do? Do you make a newspaper?" And the answer is yes, we do that. We kind of break down the newspaper into different elements, so it's news writing, sports writing, feature writing, advertising, editorial cartooning, infographics, basically everything you would see in a newspaper. This is what students do in an hour and a half. So timed writing, timed design, timed interviewing and writing an article. So it's fantastic for their devotion and every journalist here today. So before I introduce our medalists, while we're recognizing three tonight, I wanted to say how proud I am of the whole Fremd Journalism Team. We had nine students competing in 11 events in total in Bloomington and of those nine students, seven were first-time competitors and first-time state qualifiers, which is an outstanding achievement considering the competition that they were going up against. So the first person that we want to recognize is Senior Raina Chung who unfortunately can't be here tonight, but she was a three-time state qualifier for editorial cartooning and infographics and this year she took third in editorial cartooning. She was a fantastic asset and she'll be missed as she heads off to Boston for college next year. So congratulations to her from afar. Next up is sophomore Emily Howe. Emily is a first-time competitor and first-time state qualifier for advertising. Emily is a very quick study. She took her judges critiques, studied them and applied them at state where she created some great pieces of art that produced a fifth-place finish in the advertising category. So congratulations to you Emily. And finally is Kelly Liu. Kelly is also a first-time competitor and first-time state qualifier in feature writing. Kelly has a fantastic sense of humor. As a joke, before our competition, she decided to look at me and say, "Wait, what's feature writing again?" Kelly Liu went on to take first in feature writing at the state competition. So congratulations to Kelly. Once again, thank you for allowing us to recognize these student journalists tonight.
All right, we'll move on to some students from Palatine High School. Russ Horvath is the art district chair for District 211 and the art department chair at Palatine High School and he's an instructor in their A342 Broadcast Media class at Palatine High School. This is the first year that video news was offered as a category in the state journalism tournament and obviously we did pretty good in it.
Thank you. My honor this evening to recognize students from Palatine High School. It's super, it's super, super exciting because as you heard, this is the first time that this category was actually offered in the journalism competition. So we have three seniors, I think they're probably used to walking across the stage by now, so I'll call them over. Senior Caitlin Preyce. Senior Kat Campion. And Senior Evan Waller. So just a little bit about, well, actually, with the parents of these students, I know everybody's filming, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the parents please stand and take a bow too. These guys really have really supported these students through their creative efforts, you know? And as we all know, you know, all the parents here really support these students and just support through the district and all, it's, it was super great. The competition is pretty amazing. These students, this ragtag bunch here, we, this is the first time that I taught the course this year too, so it was sort of exciting for me to get to know. Kat actually knew more than I did when I started because she had taken the course before. So she showed us all the ropes and then Caitlin and Evan joined right in and just the infectious enthusiasm that they had for the entire program. And then when we heard we could go down to state, it was, everybody was super psyched about. The students go down in the morning, very similar to a lot of the competitions, they had, you watched an interview and you guys had about three hours to put together your package, you know, three people working together to create, was it under two minutes, I believe, news story? They had to pack out all their equipment, they brought cameras, they brought microphones, they brought backup equipment, backup batteries, you know, everything and there were even a few technical difficulties. But they won first in the regionals and then they won third in state. They did a great job. I just wanted to publicly thank them for their leadership and for their positive attitude and their great energy in the program and I wish them the best of luck in their futures.
All right, and the last of our journalism teams is from Conan High School. David Guzdala is in his 14th year of teaching AP English at Conan High School and he's also in his 12th year of advising the school newspaper, the Conan Crier, and their school literary magazine, Tapestry. David?
Thank you, Dr. Cates. Dr. Small, thank you board members for the time that you take tonight to recognize the students' accomplishments. It does mean a lot. Thank you too to Julie Novak and Mark Langer for the support that you've provided to the journalism program at Conan. Here with his parents, Digna and Manez, is Jalen Patel. Jalen was the sectional champion and placed fifth in photo storytelling at the state tournament. Jalen's been a valuable contributor to the Conan Crier this year, including co-hosting our first-ever podcast called A Seat at the Table, where he engages the audience with discussions of hip-hop music, technology, sports, and pop culture. Jalen makes beautiful photos that show not just technical know-how, but also a sense of artistry and perspective. He will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign in the fall. Thank you, Jalen, very much for all your contributions to the Crier this year and congratulations for all your success. Here with her parents, Cheyenne and David, is Michelle Zhang. We've seen her once already for her math team performance earlier tonight. Michelle was the sectional champion and placed fifth in editorial writing at the state journalism competition. Michelle has served as the co-editor-in-chief of the Conan Crier this year, leading more than 25 students in the pursuit of quality journalism. Michelle helps to develop ideas for coverage, trains younger journalists, provides feedback on student writing, writes her own pieces, and communicates every single day with advisors and with student journalists to ensure that the newspaper can be as successful as possible. Her dedication to the Crier is a major reason we were awarded first place for overall website from the Kettlemorean Press Association this year and her sense of responsibility and work ethic serves as an example for everyone else on staff. Michelle will be attending the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign in the fall. Thank you, Michelle, for all of your hard work and your contributions for the Crier. Congratulations. And here with his parents, Jay and Ellen, is Isaac Goffin. Isaac placed sixth in news writing at the state journalism competition and was the sectional and state champion in sports writing at the journalism competition. He's also one of only 14 students in the state who have been named to the Illinois All-State Journalism Team. In the time I have right now, it would be impossible to list even 10% of Isaac's accomplishments over his three years on our staff, but it's fair to say that he's been the steady engine behind so much of what we've accomplished. Isaac has published more stories than any student journalist I've ever worked with, nearly 100 pieces over his three years as a student journalist, and has approached his work on Crier with enthusiasm, doggedness, and genuine curiosity. His contributions are truly unparalleled. Isaac will be attending the University of Iowa in the fall. Thank you, Isaac, for everything you've done for the Crier and congratulations for your hard earned success.
Alrighty, and our final group for the night is a group that seems to be here quite frequently. So those of you that don't know, Mr. Bob Hanson, he is a special education and PE teacher at Fremd High School who has just completed his 20th season as the head badminton coach. During Bob's tenure, Fremd has captured 19 straight IHSA sectional championships, eight IHSA trophies, including three state championships. And Bob, we're also proud to announce, is a District 211 graduate.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank 211 and just for supporting the sport of badminton. It's not a widely-known sport, but we really do appreciate that you support our team. So thank you very much. I'd like all the badminton parents to stand up, please. I'd like to thank you for all the support you have given me, given Fremd High School, and especially the girls' badminton program. So thank you very much. Right now, I'd like to introduce the team and you can see we've got a couple medal winners already. And I asked the girls tonight, just to list besides being fantastic and the best badminton players in the state of Illinois, what are some other things that they're involved in? And these are all the things why we have missed practices. Journalism, yearbook, HOSA, Red Cross, Senior Executive Board, math team, debate team, speech team, golf, Chinese club, student council, NHS, band, orchestra, Korean club, and BPA. It's proud to be all, it's proud to be their coach. These girls are so actively involved in Fremd High School. They're great students, they're great badminton players. It's just a pleasure and an honor to be your coach and just to see all your successes on the court and everything you do outside the court. So thank you very much, girls. And here is the Fremd State Championship lineup. Sukriti Rai is not here tonight. Sanjana Mane. Shreya Prasad. Shravia Chanamulu. Now announcing the first sister team I've had in doubles. We only had one major argument this season, so not too bad out of 40 competitions. We have Maggie Wu and her older sister Sharon Wu. And back on stage, Kelly Liu. Kelly was the second-place finisher at the state of Illinois this year. We have Rachel Yi, third-place state singles. And we're left to my two seniors. And why I'm leaving them for last, it was down to the last match at Eastern Illinois University. If they win the match, last match played in front of the whole crowd, if they win, we win the state championship. If they lose, we tie. And for some of you, there's nothing worse than a tie because you actually flip a coin to see who gets to bring home a trophy. So I was very happy we did not have to flip this year. So our two seniors that pulled through for us, we have Jenny Lee and Hannah Chen. And one more quick announcement that's just something amazing. Hannah Chen, right here in the blue, had perfect attendance for, no, 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 for 12 straight years. Twelve, not four, 12. Thank you very much.
Ask any student who is considering attending college after high school and they'll tell you of the importance placed on college entrance exams, one of which is the American College Test, what we all know as the ACT. Each year, nearly 2 million students take the ACT with fewer than 4,000 of those 2 million earning the highest possible score of 36. Tonight, we are fortunate to be able to recognize two students from William Fremd High School who have achieved this outstanding accomplishment. On behalf of the Board of Education and District 211, On behalf of the Board of Education and District 211, I would like to congratulate our students. We have a certificate for each of them that Board President, Mr. Lefever, will present in just a moment. This time, I'd like to ask Fremd High School Science Teacher Frank Gosnikar to come to the podium and introduce our first student, followed by Fremd High School World Language Teacher Lisette Pareño, who will introduce our second student. Frank.
Thank you, Dr. Kates. Thank you, parents, for being here. It is my honor to introduce Thomas. You can tell Thomas is just a little bit shy here. I also like to recognize his parents, Dorothy Philipuke and Mark Philipuke. Thank you so much for the support. Okay, so Thomas got a 36 on his ACT composite score. You would think he's a pretty smart guy, you know, right? He's a pretty good student. He's amazing. Okay, I teach AP Physics 1-2, which is probably one of the most difficult classes at Fremd High School. I don't want to say it's the most difficult, but it's one of the more difficult, challenging courses. And this guy's got a 99.6% overall average A+. And that doesn't happen very often at all. So, he is an amazing student. It's not just 36 on the ACT. He gives 100% every day. He helps other students when they're lost or confused. He's like, "Well, you know, consider this." And he goes and presents the class or presents the group that he's working with. We have little Viking short boats sometimes, or Viking lawn boats, and he captains the lawn boat or shore boat, as it was, and just takes over and does an amazing job. He would be an amazing teacher someday if that's what he chooses to do. What else? Well, I also happen to go to the Fremd Talent Show Contest, just, you know, I thought it would be fun. And this guy is playing piano with Rebecca Rose Mannitz. I don't know if you've seen the two together. It's like being at a CSO concert. I mean, the two of them are just absolutely amazing. I mean that in no lie. As a matter of fact, Thomas may be pursuing a degree in computer science and mathematics with music, maybe at U of I, or maybe Indiana. We'll see. But he's also attending a three-week summer program at Indiana later on this summer. And, well, the other thing I want to say here is that it really seems that Thomas here is almost without limit, and I'm sure there'll be very many challenges in whatever his future endeavors require that he overcome these challenges. I'm sure that he will just conquer those challenges, not overcome, but conquer them. So, thank you very much, Thomas. Almost forgot, yes, he's got to get his award. My only excuse is I'm a little over 50, so, you know, not a good enough excuse. Thank you.
I would like to thank Dr. Kates, President Lefever, the entire D-211 Board, our Principal Kurt Teniper, and the rest of the administration present here tonight. It is with immense pride that I present Ms. Mary Tang, who is accompanied by her mother, Li Hua Wang. Would you please stand? Over the last year, I have had the honor of being Mary's Spanish teacher. During this time, I have not only seen her strong academic potential, but have also gotten to know the caring, funny, and down-to-earth young lady that she is. It is no wonder why Mary received a perfect composite score on her ACT. Her academic resume is filled with AP and honors courses, and although Mary dedicates much of her time to her studies, this remarkable young lady also makes room for her extracurricular activities. She is a member of the Fremd Speech Team, which has taught her valuable communication skills, and she expresses herself through the fine arts of dance and music. Among other significant accomplishments are making the Illinois Music Education Association All-State Band and playing at Carnegie Hall with the Midwest Philharmonic Orchestra. These activities bring balance to Mary's life and allow her to excel in all areas. Mary, you are one of the most talented and well-rounded individuals I've had the privilege to teach. You should be so proud of yourself, and congratulations on yet another remarkable achievement.
The United States Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of the President to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. Each year, the program honors 160 students with one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. The Scholars Program recognizes excellence in education and the promise of greatness in young people. I'm pleased to say that District 211 has two students from Fremd High School recognized in this prestigious program. One of our students is a semifinalist, while the other is one of just four Illinois students selected as a Presidential Scholar. I'd like to ask their sponsors to introduce them, beginning with Fremd High School Math Teacher Chris Cretoni, followed by Fremd High School Social Studies Teacher Martin Zachariah. Following your introductions, Board President, Mr. Lefever, has a certificate to present to each of you. And on behalf of District 211 and the Board of Education, we'd like to offer our sincere congratulations on this outstanding and exceptional honor.
It's an honor for me to introduce Christina Chen to the District 211 Board of Education for being named a Presidential Scholar semifinalist. Christina is joined this evening by her mother, Bing Ren. I would like to ask her to stand and be recognized. I know Christina through four years of math team, as her multivariable calculus teacher, and this year Christina worked as an intern in one of my classes. I've never had an intern in multivariable calculus before, but she did a very, very wonderful job with it. I've also never met anyone as genuine or as enthusiastic as Christina. For our first math team practice this year, Christina and another student wrote a song about math. They recorded it, they turned the song into a music video, then they uploaded their creation to YouTube, and then they played it at our very first practice of the year. The song was such a hit with the students that earlier this month, we were driving home from Math Team State, and the students were singing it on the bus on the way home. Christina is the social glue of our math team. She is the student I can count on to send updates on school logie that are really important. Don't forget to wear your math team gear to the meet tonight. The bus leaves from the flagpole at 3:30 PM. Christina is also extremely thoughtful. She took the time to create a study guide just to help her classmates study for the multivariable calculus midterm. The study guide was such high-quality and so popular that I shared it with all of the U of I multivariable calculus teachers in the Chicagoland area. And then they were asking for another one when the next midterm was coming up. The Presidential Scholars Program is meant to honor our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. This certainly describes Christina. She is one of the most brilliant, kind-hearted, and creative students I have ever had the pleasure of working with. Christina, you have had a positive, long-lasting impact on Fremd High School. I'm confident that you will continue this as you pursue your studies in mathematics at MIT next year.
The mere mention of Megan Jong's name to colleagues almost always elicits a response of, "She's awesome. I love Megan. Isn't she the greatest?" Yes, yes, and absolutely, yes. It's therefore my privilege tonight to recognize Megan Jong, now a Fremd graduate, for being named a 2019 Presidential Scholar. As Dr. Kates mentioned, she's one of four graduates from the state of Illinois, one of 161 in the entire country, and I believe the only one ever from Fremd to have earned this recognition since the program started in 1964. This recognition comes with a visit to the White House this summer, but I just found out she has a conflict. She'll be studying Arabic in Morocco for seven weeks. Forbes Magazine, in recognizing this year's national scholars, specifically noted Megan's founding of a nonprofit, Nomi Bobby, which uses proceeds from the sale of handmade crafts, specifically owls, I believe, to promote mental health awareness. This is not the first time that Megan has stood before this board, and her accomplishments, which include perfect SAT score, ITC All-State Debater, and future student at Harvard, are too numerous to list here again. But it is worth noting that over the last four years that I've gotten to know her as both a debater and student, what stands out most about Megan is her humility and genuine recognition that her success has not been accomplished solely on her own. Early on, when Megan won the novice championship in public forum debate her freshman year, she told me that she did not value the victory itself as much as the guidance she had received from older teammates, alums, and coaches up until that moment. And since then, whether as captain of our debate team, education intern in my US History class, Megan has constantly sought to pay it forward to others who she hopes might also gain from similar opportunities and relationships that she herself has benefited from. And Megan certainly pays it forward with one of the widest and most excited smiles I've seen in my career. And in general, Megan's recognition that success comes through collaboration and fully leveraging the resources around her is a quality I know will carry her far in life. And certainly, one of the greatest sources of her success comes from her own family, specifically her parents. And to complete stand, Lawrence Jong and Courtney Shon. So, congratulations, Megan, and best wishes in the coming years.
All right, it's really a pleasure for this board to have an opportunity to recognize all of our students and their parents for all of the accomplishments, achievements, and successes. We're going to take a break for a few minutes, give you the opportunity to get some pictures while you're here, before we continue on with the business portion of our meeting. Thank you all for coming. All right, if we could come back to order here, we'll continue on with our meeting. Our next item of business is citizen appearances and presentations. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to address the board? If so, please come to the podium. All right, since there is no one, that will bring us to our presentation on the 2018-2019 budget and five-year financial projection update. For some introductions, I'll turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Kates.
We're very pleased to share some information with you in terms of our projected year-end position, and then also to provide the implications and what that looks like for the coming five years. Throughout the course of the year, we keep very close tabs on what is happening financially and economically, and update the board a couple times throughout the course of the year in terms of what that means for our five-year projection. Very pleased again to have Lauren Hummel and Barb Peterson, who will share the information in terms of our current year budget position and then our projected position in the coming years.
Each spring, we provide the board with an update on the district's five-year financial outlook. Through the review of our financial forecast, it provides the board with an opportunity to assess the district's long-term financial stability, discuss its projected trends, and review any considerations that may alter those long-term projections. Before we get into the review of the district's five-year financial projection, we want to start by providing you with an update on the current year's budget position, as this will be the benchmark for future years. The district remains in a stable financial position, which allows us to prioritize our resources to our instructional programs for our students. We continue to operate with a balanced budget in our operating funds while also using our annual budget to maintain a debt-free status. By using our annual budget and our existing reserves, we continue to be able to fund major facility improvement projects, including our mandated health and life safety projects, without any additional tax burden to our taxpayers by issuing debt. We also continue to operate efficiently through the implementation of more than $5 million of budget efficiencies, reducing our liabilities and interest payments that are attributed to our IMRF expenditures, and controlling our expenditures to align with our revenue. In tonight's board materials, you have received the financial reports as they stand for the period ending April of this year. However, in tonight's presentation, we have made some projections as to where we will end in June for the completion of this fiscal year. For the end of the anticipated ending position for our revenue, we anticipate that we will end about 3% ahead of budget in the area of revenue. The variance in revenue is due largely to property tax collection rates that are higher than our historical rates, and I'll go into this a little bit more on the next slide. Additionally, we are receiving the highest level of investment interest earnings that we have received in more than a decade, now averaging more than 2.1% on our earnings compared to well less than a percent, probably about 2/10 of a percent just a few years back. Due to these favorable rates, we have earned more than $1 million in additional interest income compared to what was budgeted. Earlier this year, the board was notified that it was the recipient of a property tax relief grant. And through the property tax relief grant, the district has provided approximately $1.3 million in additional funds that are received through evidence-based funding. These funds are received in, as grant funds, and they are to offset the abatement that was filed by the district in our levy. However, while we are receiving these funds this year, the abatement will impact next year's budget through the levy. The district is also projected to end favorably in our fees and other income, and the primary reasons that are attributing to this positive variance are that we received additional funds due to the expiration of a Palatine TIF. So, projected surpluses compared to what were shared during budget development season were more than double what was anticipated. And we also have received some additional rebates for things such as our utility and energy programs that were also unanticipated sources of revenue. To date, we have received four of our four budgeted categorical payments. It is possible that we would receive a fifth, but we do not anticipate that, and we are close to budget on all other areas of our revenue. So, as I mentioned, a large component of the district's favorable revenue budget is due to property tax collections. So, before I demonstrate the areas that are represented here in this chart, I think it's helpful just to take a look. And just by looking at the data that's presented in the blue and the orange points here, you can see that there is certainly a trend of unpredictability and variance year to year, and that is especially true over the past three years. So, in the information that's presented here, the blue bars represent the total property tax refunds that are attributed to prior years. This is the information that you receive in your board materials just about every meeting, and it is related to the refunds that we incur that are due to us from, or that are assessed against prior tax years. We have seen in the past three years that we are at record highs in the amount of losses that we have received, and a large factor that is driving these increases is the number of cases that are being filed either in the, as a tax objection, a complaint, or with our property tax appeal board. But we've also seen a large number of these cases that are being cleared or closed, and those refunds coming through to us. Overall, though, we do anticipate that we will end close to where we were last year. The numbers that are reflected here are those that were through the middle of May, so we still have another month or so to go, but we anticipate that we will end just about at the same point as we did last year. When we review the data points that are reflected by the orange line, this is reflective of the property tax collections that were due to us from prior years. And you can see that for the 2017-18 year that we had, we were at a 10-year low in our collections that were due to us from prior years already, and we are not obviously to year end yet, but we are already $1.7 million more through the middle of May and anticipate that that could continue to go up through year end as well. So, that really is the major source of variance relative to our property tax revenue for the current budget year. Again, just the unpredictable nature- Again, just the unpredictable nature of the prior year collections and also the refunds makes budgeting certainly difficult and unpredictable. So as we review our expenditures for the current budget year, overall, our total expenditures are projected to end the year about 1.9% favorable compared to our budget. While salaries and benefits are expected to end unfavorably due to assumptions that were made during the budgeting process prior to the settlement of new agreements, we do expect that we will have several areas of our budget that will end favorably. As we take a look at purchase services, it is anticipated that the district will end about $1.8 million favorable due to less-than-budgeted software maintenance costs, our less-than-expected equipment and iPad repair costs, grant expenditures that were not expended this year but will be carried into next year, and less-than-budgeted taxi transportation costs for our special education students. In the area of supplies, we do project that we will end favorably in this category, and this is due to a large number of items that are just very unpredictable in nature, such as food service, food and supply costs, our fuel and oil costs, and also ending favorably for some of our textbook purchases. The biggest area of variance here is that of our capital outlay. This capital outlay variance is due largely to the district's major capital projects, so those would be our major capital improvement and our life safety projects. While we do expect to end favorably, many of these are expenses that will be carried into next year, and I'll go into that a little bit more here on the next slide as well. The other area that I wanted to just bring to your attention here is that of tuition, and each year, we enter the budget season with an anticipated number of special education student placements, and those placements can change throughout the course of the year, and right now, we are trending favorably as we've had lower placement rates than were So as we review the capital project expenditures, as they are budgeted based upon our current estimated completion timeline and also the awarded bid price, variance can occur with these projects as we look at when project timelines, the completion date of projects compared to what was planned, certainly the billing cycle for the projects and when those costs are passed through to the district. And then we also look at things such as our project contingency, where that is built into the bid/award amount, and if those funds are not needed, then we, you know, it is not uncommon for us to come in under budget on those projects if there are not surprises, if you will, during the construction phase that would require the use of those contingency funds. So for the current year, approximately $2.8 million of the variance in our projected capital expenditures compared to budget is due to our major facility and life safety improvements. At the start of the budget year, we were underway with our life safety study, but it had not yet been completed. We had allocated $1 million in the budget, understanding that we would need to complete we would have several projects that we would be looking to start and incur some planning costs on, and we've spent about half of that amount, and the remaining half will carry forward into next year's budget for the completion of those projects. Then as we look at the capital project portion of this slide, you can see here that there are a number of projects that are, again, favorable just due to timing, and we have a few others that are that will come in under budget. And the one that I wanted to draw attention to is kind of in the center of the slide here with regard to the Kona fields, the backstop and netting. And these are a portion of these expenditures, while it's favorable for this year, these are expenses that we will carry into next fiscal year to be able to complete those. Certainly, the weather that we've had this spring has delayed some of the timing that we've had on these projects, and we are just not as far along in the payment cycle as what we had anticipated, so we will see those costs carry through into next year. So this information looks should look familiar. We've reviewed this a few times now with the board this year, and this is with regard to our recommendation for interfund transfers that would take place next fiscal year. In tonight's board materials, you have several resolutions that were prepared, which will be recommended for action during our next meeting on June 20th. As a requirement of the interfund transfers, if you are transferring from the educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund, it is required that the board conduct a public hearing, and that will be the recommended action tonight, is that a public hearing would be held at our next meeting prior to the approval of any of any transfers. So in total, it is recommended that $8 million be transferred from our educational fund, our operations and maintenance fund, and our working cash fund, and that those funds be utilized for the completion of our capital projects and life safety projects that are planned for the coming summer. As a reminder, those projects include the stadium track and turf replacement at Palatine and Hoffman Estates High Schools, our washroom renovations that will take place at Hoffman Estates High School, and some approved life safety projects, many of which are taking place at Hoffman Estates High School, but we do have projects that will take place throughout the district as well. So again, by utilizing the district's reserves to through the purpose of interfund transfers, we are able to fund those projects entirely without the issuance of debt. The estimates of where we will end the year are the foundation for our five-year forecast. Next, we need to make assumptions about the years to come. Our biggest assumption is that of the Consumer Price Index, as that will drive the maximum amount of real estate taxes that we're allowed to levy. The 2019 levy will be based upon last year's CPI of 1.9%. For the remaining four years of the forecast, we have used the historical five-year average of 1.5%. We have several TIFs that are set to expire during our forecast period, and we have increased our EAV and tax receipts accordingly. We have assumed stable state and federal funding. This includes continued receipt of the property tax relief grant in the form of additional evidence-based funding each year. Salaries and benefits will increase in alignment with the recently approved bargaining agreements and predicted trends. We assume that we will close on the sale of the 60 acres of land in the amount of $17 million next year, and of this total, $7 million of the proceeds will be utilized on capital projects across two years, while the remaining $10 million will become part of the fund balance. We'll remain debt-free over the course of the next five years, funding all life safety and capital projects through the annual budget. Five years ago, we made a commitment to reduce expenditures by $300,000 a year, which carries through year 2020. And finally, we did assume that the board will continue its strategy to make advanced payments towards the IMRF liability. I'd like to get into a couple of these assumptions in a bit more detail. As I mentioned earlier, there are several TIFs that expire over the next few years, which will have a favorable impact on our district. To provide a bit of background, a TIF is an area that is deemed to be economically blighted, and in an attempt to encourage economic growth for a period of 23 years, the property tax revenue is split into two components. The first is the base revenue, and that is what the district as a taxing body receives. It is calculated as our current property tax rate times the property's EAV at the time the TIF was established. So for many of these that are up here, that's over 20 years ago. The second component is incremental revenue, and this is the current tax rate times the growth in the EAV. The revenue from the second component goes into the TIF fund and can be used by the city for a wide range of purposes, to promote development within the TIF area. At the end of 23 years, as the TIF expires and the growth in the area's EAV over the 23 years is released back onto our tax rolls. As you can see, there are multiple TIFs expiring over the next six levy years, which will allow us to capture additional tax dollars. These incremental tax dollars have been factored into our forecast to the extent that they impact the next five years. We remain hopeful that the sale of the 60 acres of land will close next year, netting the district approximately $17 million in revenue. We next had to make an assumption about the use of these proceeds. Our model assumes that the district will spend $7 million of the proceeds on capital priorities across two fiscal years and retain the other $10 million for operations. At a future board meeting, we will bring forth suggestions for the recommended use of the $7 million to the benefit of all District 211 students. After salaries and benefits, capital is the next largest area of expenditure. We have capital expenditures across multiple funds, and provide a breakdown here for your review. Our new life safety survey was recently filed with the State of Illinois and totals $24 million of projects which must be completed within five years. About 20% of the cost of these projects will be paid for through the operations and maintenance fund. Projects in the capital projects funds are those identified in the strategic plan and include continued stadium track and turf replacement, washroom renovations, and locker room renovations. Funds allocated in the transportation fund are to replace buses and vans in accordance with their replacement cycles. In operations and maintenance, funds will be spent on more operational-type capital needs such as boilers, HVAC, paving, carpet, lighting, and security. In the education fund, the majority of the capital is spent on technology needs such as wireless access and server replacements. Three years ago, the district began a strategy to lower operating costs by reducing the outstanding pension liability with IMRF. The strategy has had a direct impact on reducing our member rate and our unfunded liability. The district has charged 7.25% interest annually on the total outstanding liability. The goal is to have assets that match the liability and that also earn 7.25% to offset interest expense dollar-for-dollar. However, our assets with IMRF don't quite match our liability. We're about $5.8 million short at the end of December. Also, the IMRF investments haven't quite met their return goal, having an average return of about 6% over the last five years, but still several times better than the district can earn investing on our own. Since we are not fully funded, we're not offsetting the 7.25% interest expense that we're charged annually. Closing the gap between our pension liability and our pension asset translates to a lower annual member rate and therefore a lower operating cost. As Lauren reviewed earlier, we're in the enviable position of receiving some unexpected revenues this year from interest earnings, TIF distributions, energy rebates, and property taxes. It is our recommendation that the board consider making an additional $5 million contribution to IMRF in December of this year. At an average return of 6% annually, this is a very attractive investment for the district. So finally, here is our five-year forecast. Let's first consider the top yellow line. This is our budget surplus or deficit for the year. As you can see, we bounce around a bit between black and red numbers. The main driver of the fluctuation is the amount of capital projects in each year. As you recall, we built in utilizing $7 million of land proceeds for capital improvements across fiscal years '21 and '22, causing a good portion of that swing. In the final year of the forecast, our budget deficit trend turns around, and we show a surplus in that year, which is mainly due to the expiration of a large TIF, which increases our EAV and tax revenues in that year. Now let's review the bottom yellow line. This is the fund balance percentages across all funds, which while trending downward is still above the board's policy minimum of 33% after five years. Overall, our financial future is stable. We can stay debt-free and still fund our capital plan. We can continue to pay down our IMRF liability and still have adequate cash reserves. And most importantly, we can continue to provide exceptional educational opportunities to our students. There are several factors that put pressure on our financial stability. Some of these are self-imposed from our strategic plan; others are outside of our control. We keep all of these factors out in front of us, and we update our five-year forecast about once a quarter with current assumptions and new information. We watch Illinois legislation closely and constantly discuss implications and reactions to proposed bills. What I'd like for you to take away from tonight is that District 211 is in the enviable position of financial stability. This did not happen by accident. It happened through the solid financial management and decision-making of prior boards and administration. Financial decisions made today don't just impact our forecasting model; they impact the students, the staff, the community, and the future boards to come. Thank you for your attention this evening, and we'd like to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, if I can, I have a couple. On the IRMF $5 million liability, that's based on GASB-50 or GASB-68? Why are we using 50 and not 68, which was adopted by the board in 2015?
That's a good question. Both are GASB-68 is more for financial reporting, and it is as of one certain point of time. So it's market value-based. The numbers that we received, we just received them this week, show our funding on GASB-68 at 92% as of December 31st. GASB-50 has a smoothing effect, so it's more over a point in time, and it's not as a point of time, so I think it's more of an average.
Right, so the board, when they adopted 68, didn't they put 50 aside to proceed with 68 in 2015? Isn't that why when we do our audits, we're not using the smoothing effect prior to 2015?
It's really a financial reporting tool, since they've asked us to record the liability on our books, and all your other liabilities are as of a point in time, so it's more consistency with your financial statements.
Right, so when I look at the graphs on the bar chart that was provided, those are all fixed points at December 31st, 2018, '17 prior, so those are kind of a fixed-point trend, correct?
They are all based upon GASB-50, so they all have smooth trending built into them. So it doesn't jump, the graph does not jump from 50 to 68, it's all 50-based.
And we, so I guess I'm curious why we're being presented 50 and not 68?
Again, I just think 50 is more realistic because it's over a period of time and not at a point in time.
But our board adopted 68 in 2015, correct?
For financial reporting purposes, not for funding a liability.
Right, but we're not using 50 for reporting or anything like that?
No, we're not. When IMRF says that they're 90% funded, that is on a GASB-50 basis.
And then another question I have is, we're seeing about $3.6 million more in collections, and then we're looking at projection for 2020 of only a half percent increase in collections. How are we calculating that capture rate? Because when we looked at our budget last year, it looked like when I took an average of our collection rate over the last five years, we were leaving a million on the table in our projected revenue, and now I'm seeing well over $3 million in collected revenue. So I'm kind of concerned that we're under-projecting what our revenue collection rate is?
It's certainly just little changes make it go up and down quite a bit, so it's very sensitive to, you know, going from a 96.9% to a 97% collection rate can cause big swings in there. Also, what you're seeing next year is that we do have that $2 million property tax abatement, so that's the biggest thing that is driving that number to be less than you would expect it to be.
So the revenue isn't necessarily a reflection of the delta for the collection rate, it's just overall with the subtraction of what we would be putting in then?
Correct.
So it's a little bit different than, oops, for that year anyway, with regard to the abatement?
Correct.
On the same note, for the same question, what drives the favorable collection rate? You said it's $3.6 million, which seemed to be pretty high to me. Why is it, what do you attribute that to?
One of the main drivers that was illustrated in the chart with the bar chart with the line chart that was attached to it is the increased collections from prior years. So last year, you know, with a rate, I believe it was 1.2 million, and this year, you know, we're more than double that through just a point in time and anticipate that that will increase. That is a point that is very unpredictable because we are not sure what is going to be assessed against prior year collections, and that could be for any number of reasons that we are collecting those, but...
And that could be for any number of reasons that we are collecting those, but sometimes they date back several years prior.
Are those delinquent tax payments that are, that we're collecting now for prior years?
It could be delinquent tax payments, it could be a certificate of error that was just issued and an adjustment is made, any number of reasons that can drive those.
Thank you.
I have some questions. Rather than saying it could be, is there a way we could find out what it is? Can we be informed as to what those additional collections are coming from? Could that be information that could be shared with us?
We receive the reasons, so there are various codes that are provided, but we don't receive the detail that's behind that. We can certainly, but it could be $7 from our property ranging to, you know, $100,000 from our property. So we would have to go back to the Cook County Treasurer to see if there's additional detail that would be provided. We do, we get the additional detail on the refunds. It's just the collection piece where there are general categories that are provided, but it's not the specific detail.
Maybe you can provide us with those categories and what the dollar amounts are associated with those codes or categories might be informative to us.
Sure, and that is primarily what they are, certificates of error that were generated in prior tax years. So an example may be a property comes back on a tax rule or an assessment was issued incorrectly, it was under assessed as an example. Or, as we mentioned, delinquent taxes, those types of things would be the main drivers.
Okay. In looking at the favorable variances on a couple of the charts, one had in the revenue area, 7.9 million favorable variance and the other showed a 4.9 favorable variance on expenses, which I calculate adding the two comes to 12.8 million dollar overall variance. Is that in favor of the school district? Is that correct?
That's correct.
A question I have, with a 12.8 million dollar positive variance, what are the plans for the additional funds that will, that we will have at our disposal as a result? Are we planning on spending it? Are we planning on holding it? Or is there some way we can give it back to the taxpayers?
Well, the one utilization of the budget surplus and the combination of the surplus and the reserves, because it would be a surplus of about $4 million that is anticipated, would be the transfer to fund our capital improvement projects. Another recommendation would be the continued advanced payment toward our IMRF liabilities.
Okay. Why is the land proceed capital spending for three and a half million being utilized or incorporated into the budget in 2021 and 22 and not starting in 2020? Is there a reason for the delay?
We would anticipate, and in the materials that we received tonight, the closing date, should the board take action on that, would be targeted for April of 2020. So to receive the funds that late in the fiscal year, it would be very difficult to have a plan that would be able to utilize funds within the remaining two months of the, of the year. So that's why they would be planned for a future budget year, so there'd be adequate time to plan and have the discussion with the board on the...
So it's a timing?
The use.
Okay. What is expected expenditure? Okay, so there's an expected expenditure increase of 13.72% for 2021, if I'm not mistaken on the, on the plan. And then it looks like a slightly increase again in 2022? Is that correct?
That big jump there of 13% is due to the capital. It's really adding in that three and a half million dollars of additional spending from the land sale proceeds is a huge chunk of that.
Okay. And my final question is with the tax relief grant, there was a discussion when we were looking at that and applying for it and confirming our receipt of that, that there would be money from that that would go back to our taxpayers, correct?
For next year, yes. We're giving them back $2 million in the form of a tax abatement.
Okay. Is there a way to share with us in a calculation what that would mean to the average tax-paying household?
Sure, we can absolutely come up with that number.
That'd be great, so that we can then share that with the community. Those are my questions. Thanks.
If I may, just two more general questions. The capital outlay, if I read it correctly, was budgeted at 24.2 million and the estimated actual that it's going to come in at is going to be 20.2 million dollars. That's $4 million difference, that's almost 20%. What, what do you attribute the difference in the budget to the actual? That's $4 million.
Some of it is through our bidding process. We're able to have some favorable variances through that. These large projects usually do require some allowances to be built in and we've been fortunate not to have spent those allowances and we have significant savings on that end too. Sometimes we are budgeting for portions of projects that we later decide we don't need to complete.
There's a lot of experience. Is it, is it possible to get closer to the actual rather than a 25% difference?
A lot of the expense as well is, it's a factor of timing, so it's, it's not that it's over budgeted as far as the actual cost of the project, it's just how the, the cost of the project will be allocated between fiscal years. So the example was the, that was shared earlier was with regard to the Conant Fields and that we had anticipated that we would be pretty well closed out on that project this fiscal year, but due to the timing of the actual construction cycle, we don't want to pay for those bills until the work has been completed, so those will be expenses that will carry forward into next year's budget year.
Okay, so that money rolls forward?
It will.
And it's not, it's not attributed to the prior year, understand?
Correct.
And then with respect to the TIFs, the additional taxes, where is that reflected? I mean, I didn't see the total. There were like five line items or six, I didn't see the, what's the total there? It looks like it's close to $4 million.
Yeah.
Probably over.
Yeah.
Where, where is that $4 million going to go?
It's across multiple years. So it's layered in across multiple years of additional receipts.
So that's, that's not a one-time?
Not a single one-time change.
Okay, so it's prorated, so it does look like $4 million once and once, understand?
Right. The first year of the levy, normally that tax revenue would show up to us in our budget year about two years later.
But it's not the total thing?
Correct.
Okay, understand, thank you.
The other component that's not factored into this is the information that you have in front of you here is when the TIF would first expire, TIFs are established for a period of 23 years. It is possible for a municipality to approve an extension of that TIF period up to 35 years, so this is assuming that those TIFs would expire at their first available time. And they may not.
Just a clarifier, when you say that the funding that wasn't expended rolls in on that final slide with the projections, where's that captured as far as the revenue balance on that? When you roll that $4 million from unutilized capital funds into the next year, where do you capture that in the revenue?
It's not a revenue, it's a role of the expenditure.
Okay, so then we'd have a plus four somewhere in the expenditures for capital expenditures?
Well, if we go back to the capital side. For example, the, in 2020, that $7 million of spending next year, approximately two of it, I believe, is a roll forward of expenditures from this year. So we'll do five of new capital expenditures and two of a roll forward of last year.
And then we'll still have $2 million that's...
We had a couple million dollars, I think, that was just savings. If we go back to that slide, that part of it was timing and part of it was...
Oops, am I going here, sorry?
It's back at the beginning, the timing versus...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, on this slide, we tried to break it out into what is under budget and what we just truly have savings on and what will be timing differences that we'll need to carry forward.
So there's about 2.8 million dollars or one, yeah, 2.8?
2.8.
Yeah, 2.8, okay.
Is the framed under budget of 33%? Is that, is that usual? Is that attributed to moving it to a different year?
It was actually attributable to part of it being paid in the previous year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, that will bring us to our consent agenda.
I'd like to ask that item G on the consent agenda be removed for separate discussion?
Sure, so the motion will be that the consent agenda with the removal of item G first be present, or be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. Now the second motion here will be that the item G, the resolutions authorizing intervention and proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board be approved as presented. Can someone please move that?
Some moved.
Second.
All right, discussion here.
Okay, so just to clarify, 572 West Holland Road is a three-bedroom, single-family home built 65 years ago and it's the board's intention to contest their reduction? Looking at the property and I can't see the benefit of contesting that reduction. Having looked at what the property is, the condition it is, it does, you know, from my perspective, it doesn't seem like it's a good idea to go and contest that reduction.
I may just add some additional information. The appeal is filed as an amended commercial appeal. There is additional information in review of this item with our counsel that intervenes on our behalf. There's additional information that is not known regarding this property. It is not being filed though as a residential appeal. So the recommendation would be to intervene, get some additional information on the, on the commercial component of the, the property itself or the business.
What's, what's the monetary value of if, if the court files and rules in favor of 211?
Well, if we did not intervene and the property, if the maximum appeal was, was awarded on behalf of the property owner, the refund potential is about, it's just under $15,000. If the, you know, typically there's, on the PTAB cases that we intervene in, it's, you know, roughly a 50-50 split, so it'd be $7,000.
A different perspective to have in mind with these PTAB things, remember, everyone hopes for accurate assessed valuation, because if we have accurate assessed valuation, then the 10 minutes we spent on the questions earlier about the refunds and how they're trending and which way they're going would all be eliminated, because people would pay the appropriate amount of property tax all the time. There wouldn't be certificates of error and changes later that affect prior years going back long ago. So a different perspective on these things is it's not, although it seems that way, it's not adversarial. It's a, we're here to help provide the most accurate assessed valuation possible. And different valuation analysts come up with different conclusions of value. Value is a range of value, there is not one answer. And we offer our assistance in the process to try and get to accurate assessed valuation.
I also think it's important to note that the Cook County Assessor is going through this process for the triennial. Recently, they've taken care of Elk Grove Township and their commercial industrial properties have been reassessed at an 80% increase with the residential around 20 to 23%. So there, it looks like the assessor, as part of their due diligence to get closer to that mark that you're speaking of, Mr. LeFever, has been reshifting some of the tax burden onto the commercial and industrial properties. I know Schaumburg Township's due in August, I'm not sure exactly when Palatine Township is due. I believe that will help resolve and bring some more fairness with regard to that. But also, as someone who has to be a neighbor to some of these properties that are contesting what their, their assessments are, you know, I think the reason that we vote and authorize attorneys to become involved on our behalf is when we see large disparities. I'm not sure this qualifies as a large disparity in my opinion, which is why I thought we should discuss that.
It, it did trip our normal standard.
For sure.
Yeah.
Is there a dollar threshold where we make a determination of whether or not we're going to challenge, I mean, a million dollars, $5,000? I mean, what, is there, is there a point?
Well, we receive notice, any property that files with the Property Tax Appeal Board, we are required to receive notification of if the assessed valuation difference that's filed or that is sought is more than $100,000 in, in reduction. We do not receive any formal notice for properties that are filed as a tax objection complaint and those are properties that we are looking to actively engage in to seek out that information, because otherwise we would receive the notice of the refund without any opportunity to review or assess in those cases.
So it's $100,000, $100,000, not a percentage of the, of the property assessed value?
Correct, it's a reduction in assessed valuation of $100,000.
So if, if the property is assessed at $40 million and it's $100,000 difference, then we challenge that? If the property is $200,000 and it's $100,000 less, we challenge that, but even though there's a big, big difference?
We would present them to the board for, for their review.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Klunkiewicz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. Next, we have special reports and communications. First, our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions here? Next, we have our wellness and driver education end of year review. Any questions here?
Maybe can Dr. Case just kind of give us a brief little synopsis in regards to how it's going, because this is the first year and the highlights?
Yeah, so we were very hopeful in previous years to be able to implement wellness that would bring a much broader and more sustained approach to adolescent development and healthy development throughout the course of the four years. Previous, those items were addressed within a short window of our health class. And in the recent year, we've been able to implement a wellness initiative that will, that began this year across the ninth grade, but will continue across all four grades, you know, beginning next year. So this is really an upgrade for us. As you saw in the report, there were large numbers of students taking a very limited window of instructional time to capture these important themes, commonly taught by a teacher that was not a District 211 teacher. And so through the work of many people, our two associate superintendents and, you know, our business office, we were able to utilize the evidence-based funding model to create a plan to reallocate resources that allowed us then to reach four years of wellness topics. important matters that we continue to address at different stages of a fourteen-through-eighteen-year-old's life that have been very helpful for us. Dr. Small's been leading that throughout the course of the year. In order to accomplish that, and we're very pleased with the results of that, we reallocated some of our funding that we had previously used toward Behind the Wheel. We have a representative here from our Behind the Wheel company and been very pleased with the service we've gotten there. And that has been a ability to accomplish a great combination of service improvement in our wellness programs while at the same time utilizing resources in a way that have afforded us to retain all of our staff members. And it's been a lot of work to help devise a plan where it could happen. In the end, our class sizes for the two years of wellness have gone from forty-five down to thirty-two, and that is a major shift when we have every student in a PE class for us to be able to do that. And I don't know if Dr. Small would like to add anything beyond that. We have been very pleased we've been able to make the combination of adjustments so productive for our people, and we look forward to next year's movement of the wellness across the years after the ninth grade year.
Even though our teachers can teach possibly up to all three, physical education, health, and driver education, they're staffed as one full department and then have multiple certifications across. And the department as a whole has been very excited about the ability to reach out to our students and make a difference in terms of their wellness. As some districts continue to look at ways to decrease the number of minutes of PE, we find it extremely valuable to have that daily contact across all four years so that there is some consistency with our students for their wellness, their decision-making, and we all know the difference between a fourteen-year-old in decision-making and an eighteen-year-old in decision-making. And that's why we need those four years across all of high school. In terms of funding, our largest portion of our budget is our salaries. So this solution was the way to balance that, to accomplish something and still keeping our salaries even for this particular program.
Thank you.
If I could just make a comment, so I had the pleasure of guest lecturing before I was on the Board of Education in Schaumburg in the Health Education Department, and it is not often to walk into a high school and be very relieved that I don't actually need to be there. And so I was extremely impressed with the health education, not just the staff and the curriculum, but the level of planning and thought that had gone into choosing the materials and the way those materials were presented, and even I could see evidence of connections being made with mental health and decision-making across all sorts of areas that frankly many high schools in this state and across the country don't have access to. So I just want to say that I appreciate the efforts, I certainly noticed them, and I'm proud to be part of a district that puts that kind of effort into the well-being of the students that attend our schools.
To that end, I would say that our teachers worked extremely diligently throughout the course of the preparation for the first year, and they have continued that throughout the course of this year to expand it to the next year. We didn't want to go off too soon, if you will, that, you know, just to start it, to say we started it, and they have done a really, a truly outstanding job. So thank you for that observation, and we look forward to delivering that again at the higher levels in the coming year, based on all the work that our teachers have done.
All right, that will bring us to unfinished business. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution authorizing the sale of land located at East Wise Road and South Summit Drive in the village of Schaumburg to Nitti Development LLC in the amount of seventeen million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
First, with this proceed, we're still basing this off of a two-year-old appraisal, and we've had a two-year lapse in time between when we first bid this and now we're going to the third bidder. In order to protect the taxpayers, I think we should pause and just reassess and look at making sure that what we're basing our threshold for the sale of this land, that it's accurate and up to date. Additionally, in two years, developers' capacities, developers may enter the market that may be looking for this as an opportunity that may have potentially had to skip this two years ago. They may have finished a development, they have staff and resources. I think in order to protect the taxpayers and do our due diligence and make sure that we've exhausted exhausted all the options to ensure that we're getting the most value for this land, I think it would be prudent to at least reappraise before we engage the third bidder.
Do you think the economy has changed that much in two years that warrant a new appraisal?
I believe that especially with the new Cook County Assessor, changing the property tax burden and shifts, that's going to have a dynamic impact throughout the county and especially in our area within the next few months. I mean, when I look at what's going on in Elk Grove with their commercial and residential shifts, I think that burden's going to play a part. Additionally, two years ago, where you had a lot of labor engaged with ninety construction. Right now, there's not a lot of roadwork going on, a lot of labor is looking for opportunity. I think you can get labor at a reasonable cost to do this development. So I see that as another economic influence as far as what's going on at the moment versus two years ago.
Man, I'm surprised you say that because I don't think labor is coming down cheaper at this point, labor's getting more expensive.
It depends if you're speaking of prevailing wage labor, if you're, you know, competitive marketplace labor. Like I said, right now, there's very little roadwork going on, the tri-state hasn't mobilized yet, so you're talking carpenters, you're talking concrete, you're talking, you know, people, tradespeople that are looking for work at this moment. O'Hare hasn't mobilized, people aren't working on there in volume yet. Things just haven't wrapped up or ramped up. We look at the state capital plan, that hasn't executed yet. A lot of people are waiting for things to start flowing, so there is a potential for opportunity to price that.
You're talking about a different trade in respect to commercial trade, commercial business versus residential business.
Carpenters go where the work is.
I mean, I just see a conflict with timing though, and I'm not altogether opposed. I've been muddling this over in the same, similar way, and I've been going back and forth because, of course, the indications that you talk about for change in the economy are absolutely true. On the flip side, depending on what kind of labor market you're talking, wages have grown more expensive. But again, that depends on what kind of labor, and then, of course, the cost of materials has also skyrocketed too. And so when we're talking about this specifically, about the availability of labor, some of that comes down to a timing issue. So if we're talking about pausing to do an appraisal, which is not an instantaneous thing, it's a long expense. So by the time that appraisal is done and by the time we solicit bids, this labor pool that we're talking about now might have dried up. So like, I'm not coming out of the gate unanimously opposed to what you're talking about, but I am pointing out that this is really complicated, and there's a lot of moving parts to this, and I don't think that it's clear-cut one way or the other. I kind of feel like if we're talking about pausing, we're still talking about, I feel like I'm still making a bet at Vegas as to whether or not that would eventually work out in our favor, you know. So I'm interested in protecting the taxpayer too, and I think, you know, there are strong indications really either way. So if we go ahead, that's stability for the district for sure, we've been hearing about the sixty sale, sale of sixty anchors for, you know, not just a year, for a long time, I've been coming to board meetings for years and we've been hearing about this. So I know that there's a certain contingent of taxpayers that just kind of want this to be over at the same time. But at the same time, it is our responsibility to do the due diligence. So I think it's a, we're going to have to weigh all these complicating factors in making the decision.
I think one of the things that we have to keep in mind is we did have a higher bid, and the reason that they withdrew was because of the economy and that they weren't able to do it. And when we did the appraisal, the bids did come in higher than what the appraisal was. So I, for one, am comfortable with this, given that, you know, the other two dropped out, and this company wants to still purchase it, and we've talked about it, it's been going on for quite a while. We're looking at utilizing the funds that are coming in for some capital improvements and a variety of other things. So I think at this point, we need to continue moving ahead and go with this company who feels that they're going to be able to add quality homes to our area and also allow for the three homes that we can use for our students for the construction.
My thought regarding taking a pause at this time is, had the other bidders not fallen out, we wouldn't be talking about this. We'd be moving forward, and the bid from Nitti Development is within our parameters of acceptability, and I think we should move forward as well. Because again, had we not been put in the position because of the bidders coming out of the process, we wouldn't be having this discussion, we'd just be moving forward. And I think the taxpayers can take advantage of the income that would be generated by the proceeds from the sale, and I think it's better to give them that opportunity sooner than later.
My concern is on the downside. If we accept bid number three, what assurances are, or how do we know that we're not going to end up with someone else dropping out for the same reason that the first two bidders did? They start working with the village, the village changes its mind, doesn't approve stuff that bidder number three wants, and then six months from now, bidder number three says, I can't do it for this, and we're dropping out too. And then where are we? We're back to square one, and that's going to take an additional time. It may in fact include a hiatus to wait until market conditions improve, four or five years? I mean, I don't know, I'm not an economist, but I'm concerned with the downside. And that's why I would have been more comfortable had we discussed and looked at a reassessment to find out, is it worth more or less, or about the same than what it was two years ago? There are two, there are two consequences on either side. If it's worth more, maybe we should rebid. If it's worth less, where are we going to be in four months from now?
Well, that's a big thing, what are you going to do if the appraisal comes out less than what it did before?
Worry?
At least the bid we have right now is above the appraisal that we got before.
But there's a greater likelihood that bidder number three is going to run into the same problems that bidder number one and number two did.
Not necessarily, because I think bidder number three is more of a local firm, and they're, you know, they're more to working with the community as opposed to the other two firms, which were national firms. I think we would come out with a better product.
So you're, in your opinion, because they're local, they know the market better?
Yes, sir.
I mean, Mark, I've been thinking a lot of the same thing, and you know, to me, I mean, this is where risk assessment comes in. To me, you know, if we somehow, even with this local firm that has strong connections with our community, if maybe the cost of materials has gone up, you know, and they have trouble with the village and whatever else, thing falls apart. I mean, to me, the downside is, you know, I asked Dr. Cates when we were first presented with this kind of conundrum, what the yearly costs were for maintenance for this kind of, just holding it. What happens then assured me that the costs are very, very minimal. So I think at that point, you know, if the third bidder falls through several months from now and we find ourselves in this position, I think at that point, the discussion would be very strongly in favor of, okay, well, obviously, I think we just need to pause and do the reassessment then, and I'm not sure that there's a huge financial risk involved in that simply because we've gotten a check for earnest money, just as in this previous scenario. And so if that involves somehow us losing a good chunk of change, then I would be much more risk averse. But to me, if we give this third bidder a chance, you know, and then they kind of fall apart, we're not incurring a huge financial liability in doing that, simply because holding on to the property regardless is a minimal cost of assurance.
Well, as a newcomer and not having the benefit of the experience that the long-term board members have been, I would have appreciated a discussion to perhaps bring me up to speed more in detail on what had, what we'd gone through, what may happen, do we really need to do this bid? I think I'm at a point where I'd like to make a vote based on ninety-five percent certainty. Right now, I'm probably eighty-nine because I think there's a missing piece right now on what the land is really worth. I guess I wish we would have had an earlier discussion about this before calling it to a vote.
We've talked about this for a good number of meetings and through our strategic plan. So we do have, we do have information. I think at this point, we have nothing to lose by going forward. We've had the property for how many years, and it sat dormant. We've made a decision, you know, to move forward on it, and I would suggest we do so.
You have the highest bidder, it exceeds our price that we asked for. You have two indications of people backing out, highlighting the direction of the market. This is the highest sales price we have.
And I just want to reiterate again, the value of the dollar in 2016 versus the value of the dollar in 2019 when we did our appraisal and what we set that threshold at versus inflation, value that we've added. You know, those are things that we're not capturing.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
With reservations, aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. That'll bring us to new business. We have suggested motion that the Board of Education directs publication of a notice of public hearing to take place at its June 20, 2019 meeting to consider the permanent inter-fund transfer of two million dollars from the education fund to its operations and maintenance fund. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Roll, or discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve Health Check Three Sixty as its wellness provider based upon the fee structure as provided for a three-year term expiring May 2022. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye. Initial discussion of superintendent search process. The superintendent has put together some information for us. Does anyone have any questions, comments, or feedback at this point?
A question, will we be able to provide feedback and questions at a later time? I read the material, but I do have a dozen or so questions, I don't want to do it.
There's no action here on this night.
I understand, okay.
Yeah, so what I'm seeking, what I'm offering, I'll say it that way, is information to you in terms of what might be useful, what additional questions you would have from the proposals. I did seek two proposals from highly reputable firms, and you can see to differentiate the aspects that they offer, the difference in the price, the nature of the searches that they've done. So that was my intention, was to bring you information about the kind of search firms that are available and people that we have known and trusted in other searches. So my intention is between here and the meeting on June 20th to confer with you to see if there is a, you know, information that you would want me to seek or get and to compile, and then to put into a potential action item for you to do to adopt a firm potentially as early as June 20th.
Is there a recommended schedule on executing in order to be able to capture the largest pool?
That's an excellent question. What I would say is that I had sent information, and I would make an adjustment from one of the proposals that clearly laid out a timeline. I do think that the starting earlier in the summer is going to be helpful, and I would like to offer to them, to the board, certainly your call on that, but to be, target a more date centered around October as opposed to December. I think that-
For a selection?
Yes.
Of the search firm, not the superintendent?
Of the superintendent.
Oh, okay, so we want to lock in a superintendent by October?
I'm thinking that's going to be helpful, just in terms of-
Transition.
Yes, the transitions, we know of other key positions, and when I lay that out, I think that's going to be helpful to have a superintendent named earlier rather than as late as December.
So we're, right now, we're at a, we, we haven't advertised the retirement or, or opening or potential. So we're, we're looking at about a four-month window for a search, is what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay.
You're very experienced in this superintendent, but my, my question is, if, if someone is selected from Wyoming, are, are they going to be amenable to a move in four months? I mean, I was in the military and I couldn't react in four months, and I had to.
Yeah, not, not for uh, the person to begin in four months, uh, but for the appointment to occur within four months.
The transition doesn't start right away?
No, the transition would not begin until uh, June or July of, of uh, twenty twenty.
If you want some additional information, uh, Superintendent, like you just pointed out, it's a great resource. I think at least three board members have been through two or more of these processes. And also if you go back to the June twenty thirteen meeting minutes, you'll find the full presentation of the last search firm that did uh, the work. And so you can kind of, you can see exactly what went down last time. It's stuff that's available on, on the web, the board doc stuff.
So is a recommendation that we have conversation with you then, Superintendent, to, to go through any questions, concerns and the like? Cause um, I have quite a few from the information that I have gleaned.
If you bring them to me, then I can sort through all of the items and uh, really prepare a comprehensive information for you to consider then by the June twentieth meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you.
It'll probably be really helpful if whoever comes in to talk to us, because that will allow them to hone in on those issues. And, and they'll be informed, or they just show up in general.
That's exactly the value of that, is to have exactly what would be the questions that you would have. And I think the materials do outline the nature and scope that they uh, pursue. You know, again, this is their profession. This is what they do. They are all previous superintendents and so they're familiar on both sides of the, of the process.
Yeah, looking at their, their backgrounds and, and expertise, it was quite impressive.
Yes.
So then the progression would be, June, we would decide as a board whether or not to hire an outside search firm to execute a, a broad search. They would meet then with us following the June meeting in July sometime. And we would provide questions and, and criteria. Then they would begin the search. And then sometime um, in potentially September, we would be looking at candidates.
That's correct.
Decision in October.
Yes.
Well, looking at the proposals, both of them um, have a quite extensive um, proposal for um, getting feedback from the board, from community, from administrators, from a variety of different um, areas uh, across the district to help them put together the criteria uh, to which they're going to be able to hone in on the best candidates uh, to meet the needs of, of the, of the entire district and, and what we're looking to do from our, our mission and goals.
Yes.
So, uh, so I was very impressed in reading through all their material, but I still have some questions regarding costs and project team members and things like that, that I, I would like to have discussions on.
Yes, and uh, whatever information would be helpful. I do think uh, to Mr. Dombrowski's point, it is important for us to have that, any information you would need so that you could make a decision in June. That's really what I'm trying to uh, offer and to gather and compile and synthesize for you.
One of them had a proposed um, start of August, um, but to your point, the sooner the better.
Right.
To be able to get things moving along because of the timeline that we're trying to follow.
Yes, and I have uh, to that firm, I have reached out to them and conveyed, you know, we would be looking at adjusting that if the board would decide to go that way.
And just to clarify, um, we'll direct our questions to you in regards to the two search firms. And then at the June meeting, they will come and do a, a short presentation to us so we can decide which um, firm we want to use, if we want to use a search firm.
Yes, between now and then, there may be factors that people don't need to see both. So, but to your point, if that would be helpful, then we will have a, you know, an opportunity to determine who and what would present information to you in June.
Note to self, don't take a vacation this summer.
Or fall, or winter.
Okay, uh, if there's nothing more here, that will bring us to board member expenses. We have su- suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the pre-approval form for future expense reimbursement for Edward Young to attend the triple I conference November twenty-two through twenty-four twenty nineteen and Stephen Rosenbloom to attend the triple I conference November twenty-two through twenty-four twenty nineteen and the half-day pre-conference workshop, governing with transparency, keeping your board open and honest as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Potential topics for future discussion. I think, you know, we're talking about the superintendent search, but Mrs. Klinkowitz also.
I, I, I do have um, one that I'd like to bring forward and it would be the potential for a resolution that would go before the uh, General Assembly at the triple I. I know that over the last several months, we've talked about trauma-informed care and how it relates to our students and how it relates to, to the staff and all of those who support the kids. We had conversations at the triple I conference, um, at the Ed Red Dinner. We had a presentation from um, uh, the representative from Lori Children's. At our North Cook Division Dinner, we had Doug Bolton, who spoke in regards to the trauma-informed care. And I know in speaking with Dr. Kates, one of the things that came up was maybe we do need, and Dr. Kates had suggested, let's maybe take a look at a resolution that uh, the school boards need to present in order to help with the social-emotional learning for our students and to support staff and, and the teachers and so on. What I'd like to do is, uh, Dr. Kates and, and his staff and Doug Bolton was included in it, had made a draft of a resolution that we could submit to IASB for their consideration. We have to have this in. The deadline is by June twenty-sixth. And if the board is in agreement, can we send this out to you and maybe we can discuss this at our June meeting? And, and I know, Mr. Kramer, you're probably not very familiar with uh, the triple I in that. And I, I'd be very happy to talk to you about the position statements and, and how all of this works uh, together and how the lobbyists um, uh, can support the school boards.
Be glad to listen.
Okay, thank you.
I think it'd be worthwhile to have on the, the agenda, you know, share it with us in advance so that we have an opportunity to look it over and, and speak further about it.
Dr. Kates, if you don't have anything to add, or?
Uh, just very briefly, I would add that uh, we've been talking a lot about the wellness side of, of matters. And uh, there are students who come to us with all kinds of range of experiences. And uh, the adoption uh, this coming uh, year of a lot of these uh, deeper principles are going to be helpful for our, our staff and we look forward to those. We've been um, utilizing components of them. And, and this uh, year will be making a, a larger mindset change in that regard. And I think it's going to be very helpful and I think it can be helpful for other districts as well. And that's uh, what uh, you know, sort of triggered our interest in uh, sharing that with other, other districts that uh, would benefit and kids.
And then the process through the IASB is once this resolution, whether it's um, voted upon and adopted, then it would be IAS, IASB's role to implement litigation or legislation, sorry, wrong word, legislation that would then promote this, you know, at a statewide level. Is there an associated cost with providing these type of services at, at a, at a school that may or may not, you know, wind up becoming an unfunded mandate?
So anybody who improves their services, uh, I'll seek for them outside of our district, that could potentially happen. What I can also say is that I think it, there are many, many benefits that can be garnered simply from an adoption of understanding and principles. So that, that's very helpful.
Okay, so yeah, I'm, my only concern with any resolution that we provide is that it's more along lines of a best practice type of thing versus maybe a, a legislation that, that would be something enforceable without necessarily supportive funding. That, that would be the only thing, not seeing the language.
Yeah.
But that would be my position.
And, and I think um, when the resolution does go to IASB, they take a look at it and the lobbyists take a look at what are they hearing from legislators? So maybe they can be prepared ahead of time to uh, maybe bring in some, some verbiage, just as you had suggested, to make sure that um, it doesn't put a, a burden on some of the school districts. But I think one of the things that's really important and the, the focus um, has to change from what's wrong with this child to what's happened with this child and how can we help them? So, and I think that that's kind of the underlying factor there.
And, and something, and having gone through the assembly a couple of times now, um, the, the statement is a statement. It's not all the specifics, the, the nitty grit of how it gets done versus what we're, what the IASB would be looking to, to have done. And then it goes to the IASB uh, organization and the legislators to put together the how aspect of it. So whether it's funded or unfunded and mandated versus um, you know, voluntary and those kinds of things. Um, and part of the assembly is to hear from, you know, for, for one district to put forth the, the resolution and the proposal and then to have discussion and consideration and feedback from a variety of different districts who have different situations that could positively or negatively impact the, the decision and how it goes forward, so.
All right, so we'll see this at the next uh, meeting then and probably before.
Yeah, and, and Dr. Kates will get it sent out to, to all of our board members.
All right, that brings us to committee reports. First, we have NSSCO and Mrs. Klinkowitz.
I do have one very quick. Um, we just received this from uh, the superintendent from um, from NSSCO, the hours, because that was a question about when the, the hours for Kirk would be starting and for minor. They did surveys, they had feedback from parents, um, talked with parents, talked with staff. And the recommendation is that Kirk would be starting at eight-thirty, go from eight-thirty to two-thirty. And minor school student hours would be from nine-fifteen AM to three-fifteen. Uh, part of the consideration was of some special recreation activities after school and also um, more of an opportunity for the older students to be able to um, participate in some different activities and clubs and also to have some, some outings and some more exposure to their peers.
Do they share transportation?
When you say they, I, I don't know.
Schools.
So.
The two locations.
Do they use the same buses?
Oh, no, no, they're, they're.
Is there early bus and a late bus?
They're distant enough that that's not possible.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, that will bring us to uh, Ed Redd and Mrs. Klinkowitz.
No, I know.
So we did just have a, we did just have a changeover. I just had one quick update is uh, that our, there was a bill that was out there that was possibly going to change the property tax relief grant. And I did speak to our representative today and, and we do anticipate receiving that next year. Uh, right now in the state's draft budget, there is an additional twenty-five million for education funding. And it did uphold and sustain the property tax relief amount that had been included in this year. So that is, uh, that is encouraging for us.
And additionally, um, there are uh, certain movements to change the pension cap as well? I'm, I'm hearing a lot of that going on from three to six again?
Yeah, there have been uh, calls and gatherings largely from um, you know, groups who are interested in that. And I think they're trying to rally support for that uh, interest.
All right, thank you. That will bring us to partners for our community evening, community services. We have Ms. Cavill?
I wasn't able to attend.
I, I can share that the last meeting of this group for this current school year happened on Monday uh, this week. Uh, largely uh, having uh, reports from the different agency partners talk about the summer programs that they're offering, given that the Higgins Center is not available during the summer months.
All right, thank you. Uh, that will bring us to our announcements, upcoming events, calendar items. And then finally, that will bring us to closed session. We have a suggested motion that the board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and self-evaluation practices and procedures or professional ethics when meeting with a representative of a statewide association of which the public body is a member.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Nay.
Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
All right, we have a suggested motion that the board return to open session?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Oh, Peter first, me second.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. K- Ms. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mr. Lefever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Lisa Becker effective May twenty twenty-three according to the Master Contract of the District Twelve Teachers Union. Susan Bober, effective May twenty twenty-four according to the Master Contract of the District Twelve Teachers Union. Paul Boltneck, effective May twenty twenty-two according to the Master Contract of the District Twelve United Support Staff. Roger Carpenter, effective May twenty twenty-three according to the Master Contract of the District Twelve Teachers Union. Kay Chisum, effective May twenty twenty-one according to the Master Contract of the District Twelve Teachers Union. Richard Leider, effective May twenty twenty-one according to the Master Contract of the District Twelve Teachers Union. Valerie Okransinski, effective May twenty twenty-two according to the Master Contract of District Twelve Teachers Union. Curtis Pinley, effective May twenty twenty-two according to the Master Contract of the District Twelve Teachers Union. And Douglas Shipple, effective June twenty twenty-two consistent with the Master Contract of the District Twelve Teachers Union.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mrs. Klinkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. If there's nothing further?
Uh, one more thing. Um, I've been getting a lot of feedback on the graduations that we're hosting at, at the Sears Center. Just a couple of things for administration to be aware of. I know that with the weather being inclement, there was a lot of concerns with having the students lined up outside, I believe, for the Schaumburg graduation. A lot of Schaumburg parents were saying they weren't checking tickets. Um, I don't know, and, and they were kind of wondering with uh, the Sears Center being half-full, why they weren't able to procure additional tickets. And then one specific incident that was brought to my attention was a family member in a wheelchair was uh, having a lot of difficulty with access. And, and I'm not, I don't, I'm not saying it's twelve staff. I'm not sure if it was facility staff or parking aides. But they had a, a issue where their defibrillator kicked in and an ambulance had to be called because of um, just the difficulty that um, they had with being able to use the wheelchair at the facility and, and where they had to load and unload and, and some of those issues. Just something that uh, we should continue, or we should consider when we're having discussions with the venue as far as their sensitivity to maybe some of, some of the things going on and, and with our tickets. But, you know, we're doing a wonderful job with the graduations, but that's the feedback that I felt we needed to convey.
That's helpful.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, we are adjourned.